At West Tennessee Bank, we work closely with local business owners. The best deals come fast. We work quickly and efficiently to get the money you need to take advantage of the best opportunities. West Tennessee Bank, a division of Decatur County Bank. We think you'll like us. Equal Housing Leader, Member FDIC.
All right, so if you have a form of presence with which you speak, please. Do I have a motion for President DeJennet?
Thank you, President DeJennet.
Okay, with the agenda for the Decatur Division. The agenda we definitely don't change. Have a motion and second. All the papers say aye.
Aye.
No, no. It is approved. All right, the first thing on here is going to be our consent agenda.
Okay.
So, we have a motion and second. Approved consent agenda. Any discussion? All the papers say aye.
Aye.
No, no. It is approved. The next on our agenda is going to be delegations. And again, have this Patty Smith figure by chance. She had said she got me at the board meeting. We know, I believe, the first time, we have Mrs. Nancy Burns, if you'd like to address the board, and Marilyn Knight.
For Kate.
That's everyone.
So often, when we meet in these situations, it's not always a welcome, happy, happy thing. And I wanted to start off by thanking you guys. I don't think you hear that as often like teachers do. You don't get thanked for the hard work you do, and you do a lot for us. And thanks for everything you do. We appreciate it. And we appreciate you allowing us time to talk to you a little bit tonight. Thank you so much for what you gave us when school started. We really enjoyed our change of books. I know a lot of us liked to go shopping and stuff like that, so we enjoyed that. We're here to talk to you a little bit tonight about the SOAR compensation plan and LOE-based pay increases. Recently, we've had several conversations with Mr. Kilzer about some miscommunications and things that we needed to clear up. We're going to spend a little time with that too tonight. In 2013, Chester County teachers were presented with the choice to opt-in or opt-out of the newly developed SOAR compensation plan. In the beginning, there were a lot of questions, a lot of questions. It was very difficult to understand. We had a hard time learning some of it. I even sat down with Mr. Kilzer at one point, and he had to explain to me how the step level worked. He explained it thoroughly, and then looked at me and said, "Okay, Miss Davis, can you go out now and teach other people and help them understand this?" I said, "I absolutely can." So I turned right around and I told him what he told me. He said, "You're ready to go." So I've carried that with me all this time, though, and I still help my friends when they ask questions. They bring it to me and say, "Marilyn, can you show me? I don't understand this." So I've studied it a lot and understood it, and really took a lot of time to make myself familiar with it. Sustainability was the most important thing to us when it was first brought up. That was my first question. What happens when the money stops? Where are we going to be then? By the way, we obviously will quick to our credit. The TIF committee was unbelievable throughout the entire planning of this. They explained to us very thoroughly. We knew the difference between what was a bonus, what was salary, and what we could expect to continue to receive and what would actually expire when the TIF grant occurred.
The SOAR committee, I know when they were, when the TIF money was coming to a close, you know, they were looking at the components to see what would be sustainable on it and what would not. The SOAR handbook that is in the file that I gave you, we printed off at the school website, it was updated on May 9th of 2018. And on page four, I have highlighted what we have kind of been going back and forth with with Mr. Kilzer is it reads, "Data from the previous school year..." Base pay increases are based on data and therefore will not be the same for every employee. "Data from the previous school year," and where we're talking about is the 1718 school year, "will determine a teacher's step increase for the current school year." And so that's where we have been going back with the conversation of, okay, the data from the 1718, not getting it in the 1920, but getting it in the current school year, the subsequent school year. Because nowhere in here does it say two contract years later, is basically what we were saying there. Now, on the next slide, this is what my school got when we did our TIF, when we were getting our TIF funding. And y'all have this in your folder to see as well. Above the line, and it's on the small side, above the line was where they broke down our bonuses. And it went through step by step, if you met your guideline, if you met your scores, and if your school did, and the different things. But below the line that I have highlighted in yellow, it was the step increases which are not part of the bonus schedule. And so that's been some of the conversations that we have had, is there was bonuses, there were step increases. In my mind, when our LOEs come, it's after contracts have been signed, it is into the school year when we get our LOEs. So when the TIF was going on, we got our step increase in with our bonus money, but it was all funded with TIF when TIF was going on. So that's where some of the confusion, because when TIF was going on, we did get our step increase the first year in with our bonus, and then it was added to our contract the next year. And so when in the SOAR handbook, it says the current and the subsequent year, you will get those pay raises, that's where the teachers are feeling like, okay, why are we not getting 1718 increases till the 1920 school year? And I see that now, agenda, it has put, you know, some of that there, and so that's where the confusion has come.
If you'll turn to page nine in the SOAR handbook, you'll see the SOAR salary schedule. Just wanted to impress upon you that I've got a couple of examples of teacher contracts. This is a teacher who is on step level of 20. If you will look on the schedule, you'll see what the 20 level is. He only goes up one place, and that's $350. And $350 is not a lot of money, but it's his $350. And he earned that from last year, and he'd like to have that this year, not in 1920 school year. Teacher B is on level 36. Teacher B will move up three steps, because teacher B is a level five, and that's a pretty significant increase for that teacher. And that teacher would like to have that money this year and not in 1920. To be a year behind on a salary schedule doesn't seem acceptable to us.
And another issue that has come up to us, you know, we have the salary-based increases, and you'll find an article in the folders where July 1st, there were some percentage pay increases that were funded by the state and some one-time bonuses for certain levels. And just, it was a, from what I have been told by TA representatives, that was a line item that was intended for salary increases. And so we just really feel, you know, strongly about when the state gives us money for increases, that teachers actually get their salary increases when they're funded by the state.
Just to recap what we talked about, the SOAR handbook that was updated in May 2018 didn't mention a lapse in base pay increases. The members of the original SOAR committee maintain that this year on base pay increases was never part of the original plan. And we signed up, the teachers of Chester County, we signed up and signed an agreement. And we opted in the SOAR and fully anticipated that the pay increases would continue as stated.
And this is our last one. I told you we'd keep it short. As, you know, these different amounts of salary increases from the state or from our step increases, you know, as I look out here, I see a lot of teachers, and these are some of the hardest working teachers and people that I know. They give 150%, and we just feel strongly that, you know, what are we doing that's right, and what are we doing for these teachers of Chester County? Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. We have had several conversations, and I appreciate the opportunity we have, unlike some other districts in the neighboring areas that don't have civil discourse. We have appreciation for each other, and I do, of course, press no pun intended, but I did hug your wife a few days ago, saying thank you for not lashing out. It's very civil in our conversations. Also, when I addressed Nancy for the first time, I felt like it was important to make sure that everybody received the same information that I've handed Nancy and then Marilyn also, because we are not attempting to keep you from receiving the funding that you deserve. We do appreciate, we celebrate when, just like each Chester, as we did a few board meetings ago, celebrate the fact that you get reward status, just like what we do when we have excellent students who succeed and paid up conventions. And when we have opportunities to celebrate, we celebrate together. So again, compensation is just one of those items that we do hopefully get everybody to come on board. And unlike many of the school districts in our state, who are still using the traditional step and level, we're one of a few who choose to do it differently. As I think Nancy or Marilyn said, even a $350 raise is significant to that person, you know, in some of the step and levels, if I've had conversations with faculty advisory committees, some of those who sat in those settings realize that if they're already at a certain threshold of years of experience, they don't see any more raises unless there is something uniformly going through with the state. Not to say that what you heard was improper or incorrect, it wasn't. Everything was aligned to what, and if you look on the SOAR handbook, that is the contention that is one where I agree with both Nancy and Marilyn and others who have raised this concern with me, that that language is improper. And I would say this, and Melinda's here to defend if questions come up that she needs to, but Melinda did a great job of leading us through as the SOAR coordinator through the whole program. And that excerpt that you mentioned on page four was actually carried over all the way through. That had not changed. That was an error that I bear responsibility for. Because the conversation did come up last year with one of our faculty advisory committee meetings that met corporately in my, in my office. Because the conversation was, what do we do after the TIF money ends? And again, as I shared with everybody through, and board members had it too, and they've got it in their packets, I shared a spreadsheet, and that came out of a conversation I had because I wanted to make sure, and for those of you who don't have a clue what we're talking about, for those who are looking outside in, the SOAR plan that we agreed to do several years ago, we had over 95%, actually it's close to 98% that agreed to doing it based on the work that Melinda and Sherri Pitkin, at the time the superintendent did, to convince us that when you compare the opportunity to have performance payouts as compared to the traditional step and level, that over 95% of our teachers would benefit financially by going that direction. Because we looked at their trends and practices of the effectiveness that they had. So with that being said, the structure that we have and this spreadsheet that I provided them, the salary-based increase that we fund through our general purpose funds, which dollars that we get through the BEP and the local funding, has been consistent what we have done all the way through. What we missed out on this year, and what we're realizing the hurt right now from, is that no longer funded with the Fed, that what we've gotten accustomed to as part of our conversation as far as the check, that we, what we call the TIF check, which included not only the bonus structure, whatever you qualified for as an individual teacher, as a group, or as a school, we folded in with that a salary-based increase. Now, as it reflects here, and this was something that we should have talked about while we were still getting the federal dollar. This was a conversation that we realize now was difficult, and it's kind of like, you know you need to go to the dentist, but we don't go as much as we should. Even though it's painful and we need it, we don't want to have those conversations or go for those visits. But the truth of it is, is that we have always paid out, even when we were TIF funded, and now after, that the salary-based increase that we really realize through LOEs, whenever we get those LOEs in, is based on, well, the general purpose is only impacted with general purpose funds through the following subsequent school year contract. That's what we've always done, even when we were tipped. The thing that we did different when we had TIF funds is that we folded in a salary-based increase amount that was actually paid just like the bonus was. We put it all together in one check. We provided itemization, so you knew this part represents your bonus for individual, or this part represented bonus for your group or for your school, and this part represents your salary-based increase. What we should have done as handing those checks out is to make people know, because we're all celebrating, in fact, I had a lot of good, happy feelings. Those were fun times. Those were good days to go and visit with the teachers. What we should have said is now, remember that this funding from start to finish, including the salary-based increase, is all federally funded. Your salary-based increase is paid out of GP, your general purpose, is going to be impacted by your next contract. Because that's legitimate. That's what we've always done. But it's not what we always said. So that is an error on our part. I want to address one thing, though, about the 2.5% because you remember, a few years ago, it was 4%. You know, Governor Haslam, I remember the day he stood up instead of the state of the state and said, "Fun, fun, days are coming." Because of that 4% title. Marilyn did ask, and anybody has access to what we are funded by with the G, or the BEP's basic educational program that funds us, and is based on our ABMs, our average daily membership. Our funding that we got in July, which is what you requested and received from Stacy, was a dollar amount that we received from the feds. It comes in a lump sum over the few months or over the months, but it's divided up into four sections. One section is divided to instructional salary component, which is for the dollar amount that Nancy was referring to. Our state fund, our state amount that we have for instructional salaries is for 179 teachers in our school district. We have over 200. So when we start talking about being equitable with increases in salary, we do as much as we can, in fact, we do more than what we're guided by. Because with that same page, if you scroll even further down on that page, there is a section that reads, "A minimum or required instructional salary budget increase for the current year is $145,000," is what we had to increase from the previous year. And we exceeded it by how much, Stacy?
I don't have a dollar.
But over $145,000.
We're required, we exceeded it well over that dollar amount.
So state law requires us to increase by that dollar amount, and we've always exceeded that increase since I've been working here in this role. We've always increased it. What we are needing to do is to make sure that the language in the SOAR plan matches up what we are committed to do. And again, I understand the issue, and I understand, I had a conversation with another friend of mine today, another teacher, who was not just upset about this, but they had gotten accustomed to that nice, and I call it a Christmas bonus check, coming, you know, a month after. Hats off to Melinda and her work with the team that she had in her office that made sure, and, and again, I can tell you whose handiwork this is because I love it. It's Kim Scott's. This comes from her own script. She's, she's one of those that dots the I and crosses the C every time. So I'm using that one as a guide for us in the future. But again, what I want to say is, we do not want to do anything detrimental. We are not keeping you from resources that are entitled to you. But as some of the conversations I've had with faculty advisories where they said, "Just pay us twice." We will pay you as much as we can, but paying twice for the same salary-based increase is Year in, year out, that's unsustainable. Now, we can go back and revisit, in fact, we came out of a conversation with one of our faculty advisory committees, to go back to a step and level. Not everybody in that same faculty advisory were wanting to go back to a step and level because those people had already 25 years' experience. And again, unless they increase in their degrees, they won't see another pay raise, unless the state gives a, across the board, everybody gets a raise. So there's give and take with every possible situation. That's why I hope that now with the restructure of our faculty advisory working as that SOAR design team and sense each year, you have somebody that represents you, that we can have these civil discourse conversations. We can visit those situations, and I'm telling you, what we can afford, we will accommodate. But we cannot continue to sustain a double increase each year. Does anybody got a question then?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I think as teachers, we are not expecting our Christmas bonus. We're not expecting it right now. But what we have been told according to the SOAR handbook, and I was on the TIF for and designed team, is that the previous year's LOE determines your salary for the next year. I realize that it was not in the budget because we didn't have our LOE yet. But when we sign our 1920 contract, let's say you're a level 30, and you've moved up to a level 33. You've got level 33 salary here, and you've moved three steps. So down here, let's say you're a coach, so you've got your stipend listed, not as a part of your salary, it's separate.
Correct.
Why can there not be another separate line that says 17, or 18, 19 salary increase? And that's where that money goes. It's a one-time, it's not paying us twice, it's paying us the money we deserve this year.
So with what you're saying, just make sure I understand what you're saying. Thank you for the question.
That's always a question.
Yeah. Well, thank you for the statement.
Why can't it be done that way? There's my question.
Well, let me go back to make sure I understand what you're asking, and then I can say yes or no if it can be. The question is, is if you were, and I'm using you as example, or excuse me, say I'm sitting at step 30, and I learned that 1718 results gives me a three-step increase. So what you're saying is, is that the start of the next calendar year, when you get that contract that you want, if that's the only LOE you're working with, you're starting with 30 again, but then you're dropping down. Well, that, that's double dib.
No, it's not. No, it's not. I'm getting, I'm supposed to get paid this school year, but I'm not getting that increase this school year. I'm not getting it to the following year. So let's say that, what is that, $1,050?
$1,050.
Okay, so $1,050 that I'm supposed to get this school year, I don't get it all.
Right. Based on the weight and reach right now in the SOAR.
No, that's right. And that's not right. That's not the weight reach in the SOAR.
No, no, but, but the issue, going back to what Marilyn said, and I thought what you echoed before, was that because of the language in that section four, it has given us all the misinformation that with general purpose dollars...
So we're just going to have to skip a year. So if I decide, and I am not planning on retiring any time soon, but if I decide to retire at the end of this school year, I'm just $1,050. Done. Cheated.
Well, not cheated, because even with the SOAR, let me, let me finish.
Yeah.
Let's keep an open mind here. We're going to maintain our civil discourse.
Oh, I'm being civil.
Good.
I mean...
Well, I am.
That money is, according to the, to the SOAR handbook, it states, misinformation or not, that's what it states.
On page four, you're talking.
Yes. That the scores from last year determine my salary this year.
That's correct.
Is that what it says?
Again, and, well, I'm not arguing that. I've been said to both you, Marilyn, and Nancy, that what's in there is in aggregate what we have always done. We carried it through from the previous SOAR plan. It has always been in our SOAR plan. You can ask Melinda. That was language that carried all the way through.
I think what she's saying is that if she retired, that she is still owed her $1,050 for this year, but if she decided to retire, that she...
I wouldn't gather being all involved.
Well, if I can answer that question, here was the issue. If you know from the previous SOAR plan, and Melinda can answer this, we have a stipulation for retirees.
For the next year.
For, for the bonus structure, that they could get the bonus structure if they retired at the school district. Am I right, Melinda?
It's not really a bonus.
But again, I know, but I'm saying what we're doing is we're, to ask you, what I was saying is, is what it is, is we're confusing two money, two dollar amounts devoted to, you're talking about, we do have something that carries over for retirees, but it was the bonus structure, not the salary-based increase. So, but let me, let me finish, and then I'll, I'll ask you. What I'm saying is, is if Lisa decides to retire, if she's retiring, she's not drawing another salary, so there's no new contract. So the salary-based increase is always coming with the GP with the contract. But we did have a stipulation when we maintained a bonus, that if there's an individual school-wide bonus and she retires before she's able to get it, she's entitled to that bonus.
Well, whether, okay, if someone retires, or just, you know, say that they just left this, you know, county, or just decided not to work anymore, that's still, that $1,050, or $350, or $750, whichever dollar amount is, because it was from last year's score, that still should be their money, no matter what their decision were for next year, because actually, if it were where we could pay everybody, that would've been paid this year. So it should still be their money.
And I think what Lisa was saying before, just to make sure I understand what you were saying, is she's got, for the 1718 school year, she had a $1,050 increase in salary. She doesn't get that in the 1819 contract, because we don't have the LOE schedule.
Correct.
So in the 1920 contract, that salary increase would show up, but there should be another line item for the $1,055.
That way.
Not, not a double step.
Not just that you missed.
Not six steps of an increase.
Well, we can call it whatever you want to, but it's still $1,050 twice.
No, it's not. That $1,050 has to increase her salary for the 1819 school.
The first four years.
Okay.
And you're not getting that salary increase for the 1819 school year.
So...
So we're losing out on $1,050 of our salary increase, yes.
Well, going...
So our salary has not increased for the 1819 school year.
Right.
But it should. And it should.
Well, your salary did increase for the 1819 school year based on what you did, yeah, when you were funded, I mean, I...
Right, but, but again, under the TIF plan, we got that $1,050 as our Christmas check.
Paid out of what?
Paid out of the government.
That's right.
Yes.
Paid out of federal funds. And general purpose was paid for the next subsequent...
Right.
Okay, but I'm making sure for those of you who have a clue what we're talking about, this spreadsheet does reflect what we're talking about, Ms. Coletis.
Yeah, I agree with that.
But what you're saying is, you're not calling double dib.
TIP is gone. We're not going to understand. I think we all understand that.
Okay, so where is $1,050 going to come from? I guess, answer that question.
Wherever our salary money comes from.
That's general, that's general purpose.
Okay, yeah.
But is that not a, is that not a double?
No.
Okay, well, Stacy, would you mind answering this question? Is that not a double?
The only way that I can explain it, when you look at the sheet that I gave you, teachers have gotten a raise every single year, every single year. There's not been a year, when you look at contract from 11, 12, 12, 13, 13, 14, 14, 15, 16, 17, hold on, every single year, there's been a raise. That's the only way that I can explain it to say that the way that the general purpose dollars are allocated, that raise is what we are incorporating as general purpose to go forward. We've done it every single year. There's not been one year that a teacher missed a raise. And I understand what you guys are saying. I understand you're waiting a long time, but the raise is still there. It happened every single year. If you go back and pull, I did, I pulled just a few samples, and every single year, there's not been one year that there was not an increase from this contract to the next contract, the next contract. There was an increase year after year after year.
But if I'm a level five this year, or a 30, or a 4, and like...
I can explain it, but I have a raise, I'm waiting for this.
I didn't get, like, if that was a five, I didn't get $1,050.
We're a five from last year's primary. Should have.
You're not the only way that is on the general purpose form, it wasn't by you.
If you were a LOE, if you were a five last year, and you got your $1,050 during the big check, that would've been raised this year's contract. But the raise, every single year, if you pull your contracts from each year, there was a raise every single year.
There was.
Because that was, yeah.
But the raise, every year this year was...
And just like it's been every year, every year.
Sixteen was incorporated.
I have a different perspective. Another scenario.
But I'm engaged, and to be very slow, I've got a couple of times, those who aren't teachers, and I appreciate that, that is, I love you, the end of the fall. Just a lot of you all, and I was busy too, for a year before, and I could teach, and I know that. If you all worked for a year, and your boss says, you worked hard this year, and you earned a group share raise, whatever kind of your raise is, are you happy to wait 12 months before we give that to us? That's what we're being asked.
I don't think, I think it's fair to say, we're not begging for money, just because we show up and come to work every day and do our job, and we want our money. Because I worked hard for that money, and sacrificed my baby. And I don't think it's unfair to ask for money that I earned, and I need it now.
And again, please understand what Stacy said, that there is a salary-based increase that comes in where you get that money, over the course of your 12 payouts. What you're getting now, if you look at your face of this year, or this month, compared to what was this time last year, I guarantee you're gonna see a higher dollar amount, unless you did something different with your withholdings, or with your reductions, or your insurance. You will have, just like what Stacy said, there is. What, the issue is this, folks, we didn't do a good job communicating to you how our salary-based increase is structured with GP. That's what we didn't do, and I admit that, going back to what I echoed, what Marilyn and what Nancy said. We're gonna fix that, we're gonna make sure that there's no miscommunication any longer with that. And that's my fault, and I'm carrying that responsibility. But when you say, I need my money, you do get it, but doing it, and I know you're saying you're not double dipping, but somebody, somewhere has gotta have that money to pay out, and doing a bonus, or doing a salary-based increase twice. So if somebody was getting a three based on your structure, that's not $1,050 anymore. What you're figuring is $1,050 now, and $1,050 coming back with the next contract. That's $2,000, or $2,100. It is, I don't know, that's the math, that's the easy math.
So my question is...
That's unsustainable, for the long term, that's unsustainable.
Wouldn't it be a better job to claim when there's changes, not with just the faculty advisors, but the entire...
Yes ma'am. I agree. Ladies and gentlemen, I don't want to have any hurt feelings with this, and I know that feelings are raw right now with some of you. And I do, going back to what Marilyn and Nancy, as we're able to smile and still shake hands, hug necks maybe after this is all over, I still appreciate the work that you do, that has not changed. But there is an accountability with sustaining our revenue. And again, revenue that we earn through the state and the local, comes from our ADM from the year previous. This past school year, we actually had a reduction of student membership by 150 some odd kids. I think it's 150 or 139 kids. That was a shortfall of $360,000 that we didn't realize in funding from the year previous. Regardless of that, we still have to increase the salary line item. So we are not trying to hoard the money for a rainy day fund.
Can I, I think I understand a little bit now, I think I might can say it. A few words. As long as the state doesn't get our LOEs to us before July, we'll always get that step.
Correct.
But, our assumption every year is, they're gonna get it to us before July.
Correct.
If next year they get it to us before budgeting,
Correct.
Will we get two steps?
I've already talked to some of the faculty advisory committees, and had the same conversation. We have to have time to budget. Again, let me just say this, for those of you who really love to talk budgeting, I know it's a hot topic, especially in elementary high schools. But we have to get two funding groups to approve our budget. Salary base for teachers is the highest line item, that's what we have to fix. Make sure we're able to meet the requirements that not only the state requires, but we have to satisfy what we've already committed to, when we say, we'll never go back.
But I think we, as teachers, are thinking year by year, and so we're thinking that maybe one of these years, the state will get it all together like they said for the past 12 years, and give us our information in a timely fashion.
Sure, correct.
That's our assumption.
If we have, and just hypothetically...
And so if I move up two steps,
Let's say that...
This year, and then next May, or next June, we get our LOEs, woo! So I've got those two steps.
And whatever your LOE replaced.
Let's just go for it, let's go for it. So I'm gonna get these two steps, and these three all at once.
Yes.
How would that be the same, how would you budget that if you had to...
That's only one time to do it. It's not gonna be done every year. You're not gonna get two LOEs each year.
If we were to have to do two steps in one, that would be having to go allocate a lot of funds to do that.
Yes, that's right.
All at one time.
At one time.
It would be all at one time, but still.
That is, that's...
I get it now. So our anger, our anger really needs to be channeled to the state, correct?
Well, now, and again, we don't know what the new administration's gonna do. We don't know who's gonna be running the ship for schools.
But maybe we just, we need to be, beat down some doors, and make some noise with the state, folks. Lot like that'll work, it will, but I mean, might make a first bill later.
Yes, Coach Murrow.
We've been on TIP for several years, so I think there's probably, over six years, there's probably a good average of the people that have been reporting, I would get, I'd have that in front of me. Talking about double dipping, but it's against the TIP to get an estimation of what the next year's LOE was eight, and give a, like a escalating number, and then, we're talking about the same thing here, like budgeting twice. If we budgeted twice for over a six-year kind of estimation of this program of the LOEs, averages would be, put that in the line item, and then when the LOEs come back, we'd be close to giving the figures that. That would get you back on pace, where there wouldn't be a gap anymore.
Well, and that's a good point, and this was a point raised with East Chester's faculty advisory, thank you for that point. The way you'd have to do it is do a John Cookin rule, you budget high and you spend low. So the highest that you would have to budget, would be everybody getting a five.
Well, that's how we had to do it when we did the TIP. That's how we sat down and went...
Well, you didn't do the budgeting.
When we were budgeting, we were saying, if everybody got a bonus, and we, and it had to be sustainable, was that not how we looked at it? And everybody was a five, and this would be the payout? When we were trying to set the dollar amounts. Yeah, was that not how we kinda did it?
No, that was not it.
I remember going through line items and taking a ten side, what one...
I just think the biggest grief is time between when you get LOEs and when you get it.
I got you.
I would think that you could take an average of what's been taken out over the time that we've been on TIP. Get a good solid dollar amount, up that a little bit, for the line item, and then you could, when the LOEs came back, you could pay up, and that would get you, that would get the gap closed, and you never would have to do that again, that would be sustainable.
Well, let's finish the board meeting, and then, no, no, I'm saying, I know you guys, some of you've paid attention to board agenda, there's some things that may be something more favorable than where we are right now in conversation. But that is a point that I've talked about, and I remember conversations with East Chester about that great thing. It is very high to go that way, because when you think about everybody that was tipped, that has an LOE, that's a sizable amount right out of the gate. Parts and minds clear? Being voted up and voted down. I would say, in due celebration, there's something for waiting around to celebrate. Okay, thank you. That will set, but if you voted down, they would look at it, it'd be the same strike. That's why I'm not on board. Talk loud and clear.
The next thing we're going to do is, please, the next thing on the agenda, which is celebrations, and collaborate with you.
Fortunately, I've got somebody that's gonna be much more effective at this than I am. We always have a great opportunity to celebrate the success of our students. We know we got the best students, along with the best teachers, but we have an opportunity with our recent accolades with the VADA TRIR convention attendees. And I've asked Ms. Seiya Hunt, who's one of our sponsors, to share all the successes, give a chance for these photo ops, and the opportunities for mamas and daddies to see their babies on Chester County Independent website, right? James, are you with me? Are you still here? Is he asleep? Oh, is he left? You're here, good day.
The VADA Club is the largest independent nonprofit educational group, youth organization in America. For more than 80 years, it has prepared tomorrow's, today's students for tomorrow's league. We promote achievement, character, leadership, and service. And our motto is, let us lead by serving others. Conventions are held in each state, the top winning individuals or winning teams qualify for the national convention. This year, June 19 through 27, that's 197 days, set it up, watch it. These students are Oklahoma City-bound to compete in national conventions. Shout out to the parents, because I understand, as a parent myself, that there's a lot of encouragement, there's a lot of, packs a lot of grit, and a whole lot of influence in their lives to bring them where they are today. And it makes an impossible teaching job a lot more pleasurable to have kids like this, and be able to take them places and say, look what we have here in Chester County. I'm pleased to introduce you to these outstanding VADA members, they're inquisitive, they're creative, they're knowledgeable, and they're definitely problem solvers. They competed in the different categories, the rubric was much like our team rubric. It was five levels, and again, they had a lot of, for example, the robotics team, the first year y'all competed, we didn't know a whole lot about it, but they walk in with their little box, and there are four of them, and there had to be at least four members on the team, so we was with them that. They didn't feel too confident, did you guys, walking in with that box? There were some really massive robotic setups there, and here they are, their little shoebox. But again, they placed, again, or they won last year, and again, this year. On the robotics team, of course, is Peyton Bradley, Bradley Holloway, Peyton Anderson. I'm just giving them one, Briggs Tomlinson, y'all wave at him, because I've got it pretty bad in the wrong order, and Riley Campbell. A little snippet about what you did last year, you solved the robotics queue, can you tell us something you were a snippet of?
So like you said, last year, we went to the competition with little to no information at all. And we, our motto going in, our battery was, we thought was too big, after the requirements, so our motto was DQ with pride, and we got it there, we did a pretty good job. And we walked to the first place, we were really proud of that. But I thank all you for, you know, supporting us in every way that we do. And then this year, we made a six-tech-toe robot that played, that worked pretty well in presentation, and then we came home third place.
Kayla, the competition this year was, she ran for state secretary. She had to compete in, with a skit, she had a platform, designed a t-shirt, she had to make a speech. I'm leaving something out, an answer session, what else am I gonna do now? I can remember General Assembly, and there were 5,000 young people there at the VADA convention. So it took a lot of nerve for her to get up in front of her peers, in front of that group of people, and deliver a winning speech, and she will represent the state of Tennessee throughout the rest of the year. It was one of the sweetest moments to see Presley pass the torch on to Kayla. So we are just, we couldn't be any more proud. When, I do have to say this, Jeff's older, when Presley won last year, he's worse than the kids at, you know, when somebody wins. He'd jump up, he would just go with, really miss him and love him, and we appreciate the kindness that Presley said. Kayla's got big shoes to fill, and Presley's been, done a great job mentoring her, and grooming her, and getting her ready for that, so we are very hopeful for Kayla at Oklahoma City, where the wind comes sweeping down the plain, and that room's gonna sweep by. Delightful people here, these are our quiz bow contestants, minus one, and it's Smith, Solomon Smith, that is. They're so talented, multi-talented, he's in the talent show tonight, so he's not with us. This is Michael Moody, Rachel Jordan, Jacob Brash, and this is our board. Our quiz bow, can y'all just give us a little quick, it's written test, wasn't it?
The first board was the written test, and I think we were all very nervous when we get there, because we were like, there's gonna be a few people in it, and then we get there, and we get there like 30 minutes early, and then about 10 minutes before, just her or students coming out of the hallway, we were like, I'm scared, but... I said we got the test out, and we saw the first question, and it was pretty easy, we were like, we got this. We're like, we got this. And then we ended up getting fourth place in the written, in the exam, and then third place in the tournament.
So they did a great job. Uh, this is our artist, Kim Residence. In fact, when you look at the paintings that she did, you will not believe that it was so good. Why is that, her first place? Uh, just amazing creative talent. Uh, and again, that was, uh, something that you had done. Can you tell a minute about your subject?
Um, it was a political portrait of Richard Hammond and it took him about three months to finish.
It was just gorgeous. Black, white, it was a, I think it was gorgeous. Again, it's our privilege and I know Ms. Kim would love to be here with the robotics team. Uh, I know Mr. Lewis would have also loved to have been with us this year. Uh, he is missed every day and I know he's laughing at us every day. It's Kim, uh, trying to fill his shoes, uh, because he was an amazing, uh, man and did so much for us to help us, uh, get organized. But, uh, every time we do something, we look at and say, Jeff, it's not funny because we do this laugh and let's try to keep working. Uh, thank you again, guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cia. Who are the other sponsors this past year?
Uh, we have, well, we basically, Lasso, Mr. Cody Brown, we said, "Go with us." Uh, he went and enjoyed it, so he's gonna be with us. Uh, Jared Schumate is also with us. So now it's, uh, Ms. Kim and myself. It's Jill Fopper's fault that I do this, so I really, uh, said some ugly things about her the first time here, but she talked me into this and here I was packing and going, "I have no business doing this because, uh, I just thought that it was, I'm getting to the age that I probably don't need to be doing these things." I've been addicted, in fact, I was sitting there and I run, "Ten years pins go to..." and our sponsors correct us that morning, this, that, stayed up till two o'clock for room check. Uh, eight o'clock in the morning, I'm sitting there and they're going, "Ten year pin goes to Cia Hunt." And Kim punched me and I said, "What?" And she said, "Get up there." I said, "What is it?" She said, "What is it?" So I didn't even know I said it. It's been ten years now that I've been doing this, so obviously she wrote me into it. But once you go, you're hooked. To see that many young people together, doing such wonderful things, uh, and getting to see the products that they, they put out and the knowledge that they have, it gives me hope, uh, for America, knowing that, uh, there are people out there that are gonna take the reins on it.
Thank you, parents, for sharing your children with us, allowing us, like Shane, to send out a lot of Twitter feeds, uh, putting our name out there. State knows us for a good education program, but the students are just as good with us as the educators in making sure our notoriety and fame are well-represented. So we do thank you. Thank you, parents, appreciate it.
The next thing on the agenda is gonna be a recommendation for, for, and this is where the superintendent's making a recommendation for some, I guess you'd say, bonus page.
Yes, sir. Again, um, this is the part that I was mentioning about, uh, going through the agenda. As I shared earlier, multiple times, I'm saying it again, the, the language that's in the SOAR Plan now should not have been carried over because I feel like that that was the sole cause for the, um, the improper communication, I'll say that. It was proper at the time of the TIP money because we were seeing that money roll in from the federal grant, but now after, the sustainability is confusing because how we paid it out before in that bonus structure during that one bonus check was something that we got accustomed to, we celebrated with the teachers who were able to give those, get, receive those checks. But as far as what we've been able to do with our general purpose funds is to make sure that that next year's contract reflects that salary-based increase that you realize. Yes, I can't control when the state provides us the evidence of what your salary or what your LOE will be. So because of the language that it should be corrected, I accept that responsibility. Should've been more attentive to correct that as we transition out of the federal dollar that we have no more with TIP. We're gonna, my recommendation is that we pay out a fund balance, a dollar amount that would be a bonus dollar amount, but it will match up what your LOE would reflect. So if you had an LOE this past month of a three, you'll get a three hundred and fifty dollar check. If it's a four, you get a seven hundred. If it's a five, you get a thousand and fifty. So it is my request to the board to withdraw that money out of our fund balance, um, for that purpose. We will also correct the language in the SOAR handbook that will reflect for the nineteen twenty school year. And it will reflect what we've always done, that salary-based increases will be reflected in the next contract. That's my recommendation.
We have a motion second for approval, any other discussion? All, all the papers say aye? It is approved.
I would like to just say that that has to be approved as how many positions we have before we can put it out.
Yes. Let me, ladies and gentlemen, Stacy, baby to the punch. The south, the, uh, again, there's two funding groups that we had to get approval from. She just stated it. The next time the county commission reconvenes is in January. It is the second Monday after the first Thursday. I think that's right. You can come to it, I have no doubt that the, since our board has approved that withdrawal out of the fund balance, that they will not disapprove. But we do have to have both groups approving that. When we have that approval, we'll be compensating you accordingly. Using a similar structure to what Kim has provided you earlier in years past. But that is a bonus. That is a one-time hit. Just making sure that's said in the minutes.
The next thing on the agenda is gonna be some policy recommendations, please.
Let me just go through them. Okay. Intertend a motion, girl.
Valuable and...
And make a motion.
We go ahead and approve all the divisions, uh, the TOS recommendation.
Second, uh, in the discussion.
Okay. The blue sheet there, Sharon.
Uh, the next thing on the agenda is gonna be recommendations, educators, in here.
Okay, we're about to wrap up, but we have two, two teachers with the last LOE status who are now entitled to be considered. They meet the state requirements for tenure. Those two teachers are Madma Hundley and Amanda Keesley. So it's my recommendation that both of those are granted tenure.
We have a motion second, both teachers received tenure, in the discussion. All the papers say aye? Both know it is approved.
Y'all have any questions with the other... As far as where that grass area is, I don't know.
And the jail and the rest.
Yeah. That, I'll go back and visit the lunch list because we talked about that. There's shelving in the...
Yeah, shelving.
That's something that we can add after, just like those lap followers out there. Yeah, going all the way across. Yeah, must meet Dakota. Must meet, our, our Dakota.
Our next meeting will be on Thursday, December the twentieth at the Florida altar.
I didn't say something out of the school chair. Anybody, again, I wanna say thanks to Jeff and Clay for escorting us through the high school. Thanks for grid and Remington's team and anybody else that took an active role of getting things organized and set up to where, uh, that U E swing, uh, looks really great. If you have not had a chance to go visit, I'll stick around after and walk you over there. It is a, I would say, and we've talked about it, state of the art in the state of Tennessee from what we're able to do for our students. Uh, the PACE lab setup is phenomenal and I guarantee you that the work going to be done, that's gonna be done in that class for our students will be a benefit for all of us in many years to come. So if you'd like to go visit, uh, please do so. I'll stick around and walk you over there. And, uh, just wanna say again, thanks for Clay, Jeff, Ricky, everybody else with the high school staff, where your work is getting ready for our visit here. We appreciate the hospitality and the building looks great.
Motion second, all the papers say aye?
Word, Jer.